Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Can you hear me out there? All right, all right. Well, it's May the 21st, 2019. It's 6:05. We're here at City Hall, 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Deacon Greg McAllister with the St. Francis Korean Catholic Church to lead us our invocation. And we'll do the pledge with our honorary council member Elizabeth Hile of the Acton Middle School, Granbury ISD. All rise, please.
Let us begin in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Dear and wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here this evening. Thank you for the many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our calling, for the sustenance, and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and glorious nature. In Scripture, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of welfare and the true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives, and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Granbury. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
Follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas flag.
I'm under the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
At this time, I would like to introduce our honorary city council member Elizabeth Hile of Acton Middle School, Granbury ISD. Liz is a 13-year-old and serves as a student council president at Acton Middle School. She is also a member of the National Junior Honor Society and the track and cross-country teams. In addition to that, she has handpicked to participate in advanced theater and has portrayed characters such as Tiger Lily in Peter Pan Jr. and the lead character Lizzie Landry in Lafayette Number One Act in... yeah, Lafayette. Number One Act in UIL One Act Play Competition Production. The show won first place, and Liz was recognized as honorable mention for the best actress. Congratulations, Liz. She also... she also recently wrote her own script for a stage production called Escape and entered into a competition at her school called Script Fest. She not only won Script Fest, but she now has had the opportunity to hold her own auditions for her show, choose her own cast as the director, and the show will now open on May the 10th for the general public. She is also highly involved in the theater at the Granbury Opera House and has been in shows such as Shrek, the musical Joseph, and Amazing Technicolor, Democots, and A Christmas Carol. Beginning in fall, Liz will be cheering for the sidelines of Granbury High School for football games as a member of the JB Cheer Squad. Her parents are Russell, which are out there in the audience. Russell is her father, and Neely, the mother, with three siblings Berkeley, Marilyn, is it? And Peyton. So I want to congratulate her on being chosen to serve as the honorary council member with the Granbury City Council. So there's also a certificate that will be presented to her, and this certificate for her records, and as she applies for colleges and scholarships in the future, we'll be able to use this list and this of her achievements. So your service to the Granbury ISD as a student leader on our campus and on their campus is appreciated. We wish you the best of luck and a bright future. Is there anything you'd like to say to everybody out there?
Um...
You're in theater. I know there's something you want to say, right?
Um, well, a lot of people have been able to help me along, like, all of my achievements that were mentioned in my bio. And so I just want to say thank you, I guess, to everyone that's here for allowing me the opportunity to come up here today. And just, yeah, thank you.
You are so welcome. She's going to help us through the consent agenda tonight, and so she's going to have the opportunity to sit through some of the presentations and see what the city council is all about. And she drew a big crowd tonight, so look at there. All right. At this time, we're going to step down at the podium, and we're going to go through some presentations. Our first presentation is we will be recognizing the Leadership Granbury graduates of 2018, If all the participants want to go ahead and line up up here. And not to worry, I'm not going to be calling your names. Somebody that knows everybody will be calling those names. Leadership Granbury is... Granbury is full of leaders in many businesses, professional groups, agencies, institutions, and all over the area. But there are some leaders that go above and beyond to invest in both Granbury and themselves. The graduates of Granbury Leadership are chosen leaders that are working to make their mark on Granbury. Leadership Granbury is an organization and a program that promotes learning and leadership to strengthen our community. The program creates an awareness of community resources and needs, enhances leadership skills, and helps identify future leaders. These graduates of Leadership Granbury met for 10 months, and in that time, they learned about everything from local government to small businesses to nonprofit organizations. The Granbury community benefits from the example of great leaders, and we appreciate your hard work and dedication to making a better Granbury, and we look forward to seeing the future impact that you will have as you continue to invest in our community. The class leaders Paige Hopkins and Jackie Gordon and Debbie Prince will now introduce the 2018-19 Leadership Granbury graduates. You want to step up here and use this?
We are short a few tonight, but we'll start with Shane Deschutelle, Dobie Williams, Brent Holdridge, Cherie Lowe, Bethany Warner. We have several that aren't here. Also want to introduce our new board this year. Julia Pennell is vice president. Holly Martin is president. And Bruce Wadley's on the board, and Diane McBride are here. Is that all that are here? And if you're an alumni of Leadership Granbury, would you stand? Let's just see how many in the group are alumni. Thank you, guys, very much. We had an awesome year this year. We learned about a lot of new things, a lot of old things, and things that you wouldn't even know. So please, if you ever think you're interested, let us know. We'd love to have you join our group.
I believe they still get to go up in the tower. Is that right? You get to go up in the tower of the courthouse? I've never been there. I guess I need to join this group and experience that, right? Is that the only way you get to get up there? Okay, all right, well. You get to wind the clock. Wow. Wow, that's great. Our next presentation is we're going to recognize Jackson Bryce for earning the rank of Eagle Scout with Boy Scouts Troop 360 of Granbury. Could I get Scout Bryce to come up? Well, I thought I had it up here. And I do. You know, Bryce, he received this honor last week, wasn't it, Bryce, I think? And I was out of town. And I called him and said, you know, I'd really like to have you out front and would like to recognize you here in a council meeting. And so he was... he agreed to that and came up to the council meeting. But he's received his award last Sunday, wasn't it? Or last week, I think it was? Yeah. But we like to honor him up here because it is an achievement that people, you know, it takes a lot of devotion, like, it takes a lot of time away from him, and it's something that, you know, it takes a commitment. And so we appreciate that. We'd like to congratulate you on your outstanding accomplishments, earning the rank of Eagle Scout. You can take pride in having earned the highest award in scouting and joining the ranks of some of our nation's greatest leaders in politics, religion, military, and business. You have demonstrated remarkable qualities of leadership and moral character for achieving this prestigious award, and I commend you for your hard work, your dedication, and your sheer determination. Making a positive difference in the lives of others is the truest expression of leadership. May the honor of this award inspire you to a lifetime of service to your fellow citizens in this great country. I extend the best wishes to you on your special day and your continued success throughout your life. Congratulations. Come, Bryce. Bryce, Bryce, Bryce. We're not done yet. And Bryce, along with that, we want to present you with a certificate, and I'll read the certificate to you. This certificate is presented to Jackson Bryce for his outstanding achievement and his exceptional leadership and citizen evidence by his attainment of the rank of Eagle Scout. It is given under my hand and the seal of the City of Granbury on this 21st day of May 2019. Once again, congratulations. You know, I was just talking to him in the crowd earlier, and you know, and there's not a lot of Eagle Scouts in this area. And then, you know, we try to recognize them at the council meeting and recognize them at their events that they have because it is a commitment. It takes a lot of the time to get to that rank. And so it's... Does anybody know? How many are there actually? We've got some leaders out there. Is there seven, eight? Huh? Yeah, do we have some Eagle Scouts out there? One? Two? Three? All right, thank you. At this time, I'm going to call on Ms. Julia Pennell, and she's going to give a presentation.
May we have your permission to turn this a little bit more so they can hear?
What if I was to say no?
Just us.
I would be the first one to do that to her, wouldn't I? Right? Okay.
The manager, Chris Kaufman, and elected members of the city council, thank you for allowing us this special time. We said recently that May should be Call Friends in Memorial Lane Month. May the 4th was the firefighter day. May the 11th, the police week event. May 27th coming up, we have the beautiful opening ceremony for Memorial Day. We invite you all to come walk with us on the Remembrance Walk, to me, the most moving event of the day. And we have our helmet back. So, yes. To citizens' donations and Lake Granbury Medical Center. At this time, I'd like for all the friends in Memorial Lane to come forward and stand behind the chairs, please. All the team. This is the hardest-working group of people I've ever had the pleasure to work with. And tonight, we have asked Mary Mullen, who's on what we call our project committee now, to join us, as she has designed the special awards that we're going to present tonight. I have asked co-chair Doug Pruitt, Rich Merrill, chair of firefighter event, Vicky Connors, co-chair of the police week. If y'all will come over here, please. And Mickey Allen, Secretary of Treasury, to help present the awards. I would like to ask the following people to come forward, and this is a surprise to all of these folks. Chief Mitch Galvan. And you can sit in the first chair. Next, and this is a surprise, city manager, Chris Kaufman.
What?
Mayor Nan Hewlett. When they get seated, you'll notice usually it's the third man out. Well, tonight, we have a fourth man out because our fourth man that is receiving an award will be coming, and is a special guest. So we would like... They were all surprised. Chris did this for us to surprise other people, and so we are going to surprise them. So at this time, we will start with our first presentation by Vicky.
I'm going to read this because these accomplishments are so important, I don't want to miss anything. I don't want to forget anything. Chief Galvan was sworn in as chief of police for the City of Granbury in August of 2006 after a five-month stint as the acting police chief. Chief Galvan is a graduate of Tarleton State University and the FBI National Academy. Under the guidance and leadership of Chief Galvan, the Granbury Police Department has grown into a modern and professional law enforcement agency. Since 2006, Chief Galvan has been instrumental in the development of many important programs to include deployment of a computer-aided dispatch system for first responders, active shooter threat training for local law enforcement, and the Granbury Independent School District, the Peluxi River Child Advocacy Center, the Citizens Police Academy, and the Citizens Police Academy alumni, and the Citizens on Patrol Program. But from firsthand knowledge, I will tell you, I think his biggest accomplishment, additionally, he led the department through the first accrediting process in which the Granbury Police Department became a recognized agency by the Texas Police Chiefs Association. This process involves an in-depth review of all internal procedures to ensure the Granbury Police Department is operating according to the best practices within the state of Texas. Chief Galvan has been a dedicated public servant, an invaluable resource to this community and to the citizens of Granbury. Therefore, the Friends of Memorial Lane wish to present you with this special award and say thank you from the citizens of Granbury for your dedication to keep it all safe.
Leadership is not a title or a designation. It's about impact, influence, and inspiration. Impact involves getting results. Influence is about spreading the passion that you have for your work, and you have to inspire coworkers and the citizens you lead. For your leadership as city manager and your willingness to go the extra mile, such as making the council available for our police week event, opening and closing, and taking care of all the details yourself early before we got here, we present you, Chris, with this very special Friends of Memorial Lane plaque to hang in your office as a reminder to all of what you represent and what city leadership looks like. Nan, I think that you were one of them that knows this more than anything else. When Julia Pennell says "do," you do. Mayor, you inspire others to have that passion for our city and to impact others to do so. We'd like to present you with this resolution given to the Friends from the Senate floor regarding our dedication to the city and the importance of law enforcement. Please showcase this. This is so that all can see how the city joins Friends of Memorial Lane to support all of the law enforcement in this area. Thank you.
I'm Rich Merrill. I'm on Friends of Memorial Lane, and since I was the chairman of this year's National Firefighter Day, they asked me to give you this award. And I want to say a few words first, J.C. J.C. started on the fire department in July of 1978. That's before men... Some of you were born, right? Okay. That's right, July. I didn't... It didn't say 4th, but we're going to believe you there, J.C. He is still considered an active member. He just doesn't fight fires anymore or go on many calls, but he is still active on the active roster. He always tries to come to the meetings and encourages and gives good advice to the young firefighters. He volunteers on the scholarship committee. He promotes the fire department everywhere he goes. He is still a very important part of the department. J.C. also worked as co-chair of the fundraising committee with Julia Pennell to raise the funds for the original firefighter site at the Jim Burks Firefighter Memorial Park, which has now become a part of Memorial Lane. So for your 41 years of dedication as a volunteer firefighter, your participation in all the fundraising to make the park possible, and for your ongoing dedication to the Friends of Memorial Lane, our team proudly presents you with this unique firefighter plaque.
I believe they still get to go up in the tower. You get to go up in the tower of the courthouse? I've never been there. I guess I need to join this group and experience that, right? Is that the only way you get to get up there? Okay, all right, well. You get to wind the clock. Wow. Wow, that's great. Our next presentation is we're going to recognize Jackson Bryce for earning the rank of Eagle Scout with Boy Scouts Troop 360 of Granbury. Could I get Scout Bryce to come up? Jackson, there you go. Well, I thought I had it up here. And I do. You know, Bryce, he received this honor last week, wasn't it, Bryce, I think? And I was out of town. And I called him and said, you know, I'd really like to have you out front and would like to recognize you here in a council meeting. And so he was... he agreed to that and came up to the council meeting. But he's received his award last Sunday, wasn't it? Or last week, I think it was? Yeah. But we like to honor him up here because it is an achievement that people, you know, it takes a lot of devotion, like, it takes a lot of time away from him, and it's something that, you know, it takes a commitment. And so we appreciate that. We'd like to congratulate you on your outstanding accomplishments, earning the rank of Eagle Scout. You can take pride in having earned the highest award in scouting and joining the ranks of some of our nation's greatest leaders in politics, religion, military, and business. You have demonstrated remarkable qualities of leadership and moral character for achieving this prestigious award, and I commend you for your hard work, your dedication, and your sheer determination. Making a positive difference in the lives of others is the truest expression of leadership. May the honor of this award inspire you to a lifetime of service to your fellow citizens in this great country. I extend the best wishes to you on your special day and your continued success throughout your life. Congratulations.
Come, Bryce. Bryce, Bryce, Bryce. We're not done yet. And Bryce, along with that, we want to present you with a certificate, and I'll read the certificate to you. This certificate is presented to Jackson Bryce for his outstanding achievement and his exceptional leadership and citizen evidence by his attainment of the rank of Eagle Scout. It is given under my hand and the seal of the City of Granbury on this 21st day of May 2019. Once again, congratulations.
You know, I was just talking to him in the crowd earlier, and you know, and there's not a lot of Eagle Scouts in this area. And then, you know, we try to recognize them at the council meeting and recognize them at their events that they have because it is a commitment. It takes a lot of the time to get to that rank. And so it's... Does anybody know? How many are there actually? Do we've got some leaders out there? Is there seven, eight? Huh? Yeah, do we have some Eagle Scouts out there?
No.
One? Two? Three? All right, thank you. At this time, I'm going to call on Ms. Julia Pennell, and she's going to give a presentation.
May we have your permission to turn this a little bit more so they can hear?
What if I was to say no?
Just us.
I would be the first one to do that to her, wouldn't I? Right? Okay. Where you want?
The manager, Chris Kaufman, and elected members of the city council, thank you for allowing us this special time. We said recently that May should be Call Friends in Memorial Lane Month. May the 4th was the firefighter day. May the 11th, the police week event. May 27th coming up, we have the beautiful opening ceremony for Memorial Day. We invite you all to come walk with us on the remembrance walk, to me, the most moving event of the day. And we have our helmet back. So, yes. Thanks to citizens' donations and Lake Granbury Medical Center. At this time, I'd like for all the friends in Memorial Lane to come forward and stand behind the chairs, please. All the team. This is the hardest-working group of people I've ever had the pleasure to work with. And tonight, we have asked Mary Mullen, who's on what we call our project committee now, to join us, as she has designed the special awards that we're going to present tonight. I have asked co-chair Doug Pruitt, Rich Merrill, chair of firefighter event, Vicky Connors, co-chair of the police week. If y'all will come over here, please. And Mickey Allen, Secretary of Treasury, to help present the awards. I would like to ask the following people to come forward, and this is a surprise to all of these folks. Chief Mitch Galvan. And you can sit in the first chair. Next, and this is a surprise, city manager, Chris Kaufman.
What?
Mayor Nan Hewlett. When they get seated, you'll notice usually it's the third man out. Well, tonight, we have a fourth man out because our fourth man that is receiving an award will be coming, and is a special guest. So we would like... They were all surprised. Kauf... Chris did this for us to surprise other people, and so we are going to surprise them. So at this time, we will start with our first presentation by Vicky.
I'm going to read this because these accomplishments are so important, I don't want to miss anything. I don't want to forget anything. Chief Galvan was sworn in as chief of police for the City of Granbury in August of 2006 after a five-month stint as the acting police chief. Chief Galvan is a graduate of Tarleton State University and the FBI National Academy. Under the guidance and leadership of Chief Galvan, the Granbury Police Department has grown into a modern and professional law enforcement agency. Since 2006, Chief Galvan has been instrumental in the development of many important programs to include deployment of a computer-aided dispatch system for first responders, active shooter threat training for local law enforcement, and the Granbury Independent School District, the Peluxi River Child Advocacy Center, the Citizens Police Academy, and the Citizens Police Academy alumni, and the Citizens on Patrol Program. But from firsthand knowledge, I will tell you, I think his biggest accomplishment, additionally, he led the department through the first accrediting process in which the Granbury Police Department became a recognized agency by the Texas Police Chiefs Association. This process involves an in-depth review of all internal procedures to ensure the Granbury Police Department is operating according to the best practices within the state of Texas. Chief Galvan has been a dedicated public servant, an invaluable resource to this community and to the citizens of Granbury. Therefore, the Friends of Memorial Lane wish to present you with this special award and say thank you from the citizens of Granbury for your dedication to keep it all safe.
Leadership is not a title or a designation. It's about impact, influence, and inspiration.
agreement between the city of Granbury and the Weatherford College for the use of their campus facility. Councilman Allen has asked to put this on the deliberation agenda item, and I believe we're going to call upon Chris Kaufman to give us a little more detail on what this is. So if you could, Chris?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Appreciate the opportunity to kind of explain this item to you. You will recall that the, um, Weatherford College, the city, the county, and the school historically worked together to have Weatherford College, uh, campus here in Granbury. And, um, recently, the school went through a program and wanted to divest themselves of the real estate in which the college is located, along with the Decker Gem and the Decker Field and the land associated with that, and, uh, the city was glad to receive that. The other aspect of this was to continue a good relationship with Weatherford College and keep them in this facility, and we, we met with Weatherford College, uh, executive team and executive session and negotiated some of the terms of this agreement, and they're spelled out in here that, uh, number one, the, the rent is like it was with the school. It's a dollar a year, beginning execution of this document, expiring in 2023. Weatherford College and the city agreed to reciprocate on indemnification and hold harmless for their respective employees and boards against any claims resulting from individuals using the facility, and the, the college and the city collaborate in a responsible and reasonable manner to, to resolve any issues related to the use of the building. Weatherford College will provide daily maintenance to the building, but not limited to janitorial services. Weatherford College will maintain the building interior, including but not limited to painting and the floor coverings. The Weatherford College will maintain a utility account with the city for the provision of water and electricity to the campus or facility, and the city shall maintain all fire alarm services and contracts for the building. I added that because I really felt like we needed a modern, update fire alarm in that facility, and, uh, we'll just put it with the rest of our fire alarm services where it actually calls the fire department or the dispatch if there's a fire automatic. So, uh, then the, the other item is the city shall maintain the building's major mechanical and structural integrity, including but not limited to the HVAC systems, the building exterior facade, roof, electrical plumbing, and parking lot area. So these terms were hashed out, uh, in the closed session. Put together, we sent these terms to Weatherford College, and their board unanimously has approved it, and there's a letter attached authorizing, uh, Dr. Farmer to execute the agreement and upon your approval. Councilmember Allen asked about our cost maintaining the building. That's yet to be determined. Um, we'll talk about that at another meeting, but, but basically, we've got, as we talked about when we received the property, we've got asbestos we need to look into and other items like that. But, but more than anything, this agreement shows the, um, the unwavering support of this city council towards Weatherford College Granbury campus, and, uh, we look forward to them continuing to meet the needs of our students here in town, whether, regardless of their age, and they run about 300 students per semester at our local campus, plus they run the AP program at the, at the high school. So there's dual credits accruing to Weatherford College, uh, this semester, as well as, uh, regular campus education taking place. Be happy to answer any questions you may have, but as far as having a fixed cost of what it costs to, to maintain and fix that facility, I do not have those numbers.
Well. Councilman Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. I read the same thing to myself that you just read out loud, and now, one of those items had a number on it, and I voted against the, I did not vote against the, the school taking it over. I was in the hospital at this time, or I would have, but we've got a building with asbestos. We don't know what for sure it's going to cost us. We have no budget set up for maintenance on this, and every one of these has an out for the college and not an out for our taxpayers. And I think it, you know, our budget's due in, in, uh, October, and we have anything major between now and then. I know as old saying is, well, just load it on me, we'll get it, but, you know, we're in debt pretty good. We went to $120 million in debt from $40 million, and we, we've done a lot. We've done a lot of stuff to get there, and I'm not saying it wasn't spent wisely, but I'm saying when you or whoever sent this to us, I hope the rest of the council look at it like, okay, here's a blank check. Sign it because we want to leave the college here. I think the college is great. My grandson went over there to get some dual credit during, uh, school. It, it's a, it's a great deal, but we got 300 kids go there. Not one time have we seen a financial statement from that college what they make. So I think it's a, I think we should look at this and get some numbers on it before we go out here and vote on something that could hurt our city in the long run, and we'd love to have you, like Chris. Here we are with open arms, but not open checkbook on my part. Thank you.
Go ahead, Chris.
Um, I just, this is what you as a council directed staff to do in executive session to put together agreement with these terms and bring it back to you. So we've done exactly what you asked. We, we discussed the cost and knew that we didn't know how much it was going to cost to address any asbestos. We knew that that's a looming responsibility when we accepted the, the buildings and the property, and so that's where we're at, and I'd be happy to do whatever you need me to do from here, but I'm strictly following a ministerial function here of presenting to you what I believe you were, and all of y'all were a part of in that meeting and executive session with the, the folks from Weatherford College.
Mayor, I was in, I was in that meeting in the back room, and if most people know me, I always ask what's it going to cost? Maybe I didn't ask that.
Yeah, you did.
Did I, Mayor?
You were there.
I did, and I still want to know what it cost. I, you know, I'm a home builder, so I go out here and build a custom home, and they say, oh, just make it beautiful. What's it going to cost us? What's it going to cost to make it back like it was? I'm, I'm, I think we need to table it, get some firm numbers on this. We got an out to give us back to the school. I believe that's what Jeremy told me. Is that right, Jeremy?
Say that one more time.
Do we have an out to give us back to school if we wanted to?
No. Not an out, but.
If at some point we don't use it for public benefit, then it would revert back to the school district.
Yes.
And I think, Councilman Allen, if I may, like I said, we did talk about that, and I think that's how this came about, because we talked about.
We did.
But we talked about the contract of operation, and I think we're what, what we're, what I'm hearing here is a, an o, a, a, a dollar amount for demo or, or whatever we got to do to, to remodel and things like this. I don't know that we talked particularly about that in the, in session, but we talked about the operating of it, because there were some of these things on here that had a dollar amount on that has went away that Weatherford College has taken on, and that's what we were, or that I was concerned about, is making sure that those kind of things didn't fall under, under the city's taking and, and paying maintenance people, crew maintenance, and, and, and those kind of things that you see that Weatherford College has taken on. Uh, so I, I do believe that there should be a, something in our budget of what that building is particularly is going to cost to, uh, not to maintain, because I think we've got this all identified, but to do any remodeling and stuff like it. Does council, any, any other council got any comments on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
Maybe we're in a different meeting, but I thought we, we talked about it ad nauseam about some of the costs as far as maintenance, as far as upkeep, as far as.
We did.
The, the structure itself. We didn't talk about refurbishing the building. We didn't talk about asbestos removal, because that was going to come at a later date, and it's my understanding we have a budget meeting coming in about a month where we will discuss some of these things for future budgets, but to get us through October, I don't think it's necessary that we plan on replacing the roof, the asbestos, and the air conditioning units before we get it in the budget, which is coming up on us quicker than we would like to think. So, but I was in a meeting where we discussed all of this, so I'm kind of surprised by the comments, uh, in a way, because we talked about it. In fact, I think that was probably the longest discussion item for the entire meeting at the last meeting, if I'm not mistaken. So, like I said, I'm just confused by this discussion.
Mayor, can I say something on that?
Councilman Allen, go ahead.
I, I got a question for Jeremy. Let's say we approve this tonight, and then we do this workshop that, uh, Mr. Mobley's talking about to see how much it's going to cost us to do asbestos and all this stuff, and we come back two months from now or three months from now and it's $4 million. I'm just throwing that out there. We already signed a contract with them. Do we got to get, bring that building up to code?
They're only using one area of the building, and the, the.
I'm talking about the parts right here, Jeremy.
What, what, what we need to do is whatever the city standards are for our part, and, and they're maintaining the interior, the lighting, the electrical, I believe. Uh, it was all laid out.
Painting on the floor.
The, the painting, but, I mean, yeah, any building that we have needs to be to city standards, of course.
So in other words, if the, the roof falls in, we're liable. Air conditioners go out, we're liable.
Yes.
We're going to, we're going to pay for those.
Received the property.
I, I just can't believe we'd go around the house without checking it out. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
Has nobody in this city looked at this building before today?
Yes, yes, we have.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
I have.
Chris, we've had people look at it.
Yes, we have.
Go ahead. Council, any more discussion? If no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve the memorandum understanding agreement between the city of Granbury and Weatherford College for the use of the campus facility.
Mayor, I make a motion. We put this on a 45-day study to get all of our numbers in before we spend our taxpayer money like this.
I might as well comment, sir.
Well, let's get through the motion here. I think we've got a motion from Councilman Allen, but the motion is in the form of a timeline. I think if you're going to have a motion, as that said, it should have to be a motion to table it to a later date and then identify the later date, right?
I'll make that motion.
So you're going to make, make a motion to table it at a later date, and the date being next council meeting?
Yeah, it'd be fine. If, if, if staff can have us.
June the 7th.
The numbers on it.
I cannot have it ready by then.
How long would you need, Chris?
I think I'm going to come back to you at the next meeting, uh, with a budget amendment to do an asbestos survey to let us identify all the asbestos on the whole campus, and then as we remodel particular buildings to suit our needs for future use, we will know what needs to be abated, and we will have the cost then. So it would probably take about, um, uh, a month and a half to, to be able to get that asbestos number, but at the same time, I have, uh, I have an architect working on pricing to get Decker Gem secured with the new roof, as we discussed, and, uh, the facade that needs to be approved on the exterior of that where they tore down the other building. And again, there's asbestos, so we're not going to be able to do the work until we remove that asbestos, so, uh, met with the architect today on Decker Gem.
There's another way you can't, you could postpone it to a, a later date instead of table it.
Yeah, like July the.
You could, uh.
July the 16th.
Well, you don't even have to name a date on that.
July 16th would be our, second meeting.
Okay. July 16th?
Is there any special reason for us to have to do this tonight?
Well, they're planning their fall semesters, you know, as we speak.
They like to work under a contract.
And they need, they need security that they're going to be able to offer classes here, and again, they, uh, they, they offer classes here, and they don't charge our local students an out-of-district rate, even though they are, but, uh, our, our citizens are receiving a benefit for our generosity of the guys. Uh, they, they, they get the hometown rate, as if you were a taxpayer in Weatherford, uh, for your classes, and, uh, pass that on to all the students.
Well, I, I don't think the city or the school would turn them down when it come down to it, but I think it's something that we can work together, maybe after we look at these numbers, with the school and say, hey, look, help us out here. If they can't, why should it be the taxpayer burden of doing this? That's my motion, Mayor.
So your motion is to table until July 16th?
Yes, sir.
Table this item until July 16th. So I have a motion to table this item until the date of July the 16th council meeting. Do I have a second?
Of course not.
So motion fails, lack of a second. Once again, council, there's, uh, this item is on the table here. I'll entertain a motion to approve the memorandum and understanding agreement between the city of Granbury and Weatherford College for the use of their campus facility. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion, but Councilman Mobley?
Second.
And a second, Councilman Corrigan. Council, any more discussion on this item? Council Corrigan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilman Wadley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman, uh, Mobley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Reiner?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. That is, that is approved. Next, we'll move down to our number three item on the deliberation agenda is to discuss and consider pardoning, partnering with the Granbury Independent School District for a Texas Parks and Wildlife Trails Grant for property located near the Acton Middle School, and I'm going to call upon our city manager, Chris Kaufman, to get this one started. Chris, if you would, please.
Thank you. Um, we've been working with Acton Middle School for a little over a year, discussing a trail, um, around the perimeter of their campus, and at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Dawson, our principal at Acton Middle School, to, uh, lead us through a presentation that they've put together by their students, and we've got some opportunities to partner with them, and, uh, this is a great project, and I hope that you see the merit of it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Mayor Hewitt, city manager Chris Kaufman, council members, thank y'all for the opportunity to come and present, uh, this exciting project that we have going on. Uh, we had the opportunity to share with our school board, uh, last night, uh, a little bit about this trails grant, and I don't, Carl, I don't see, I'm missing a clicker somewhere.
It's right there.
Got it. So we had the opportunity to, uh, to go through this last night, and we also had the opportunity, and I just want to say a big kudos to J.C. Campbell, and very deserving of his award, and so he was there last night getting recognized as family as well with, for his wife's hard work in the school district as well, so it's great to see J.C. here tonight again, getting recognized, well deserved. Um, and so, this exciting project, I have several people here with me tonight, including a couple of students. Um, Walt Hartman from AMS, one of our gifted and talented students and Outdoor Learning Center, um, uh, he's on the Outdoor Learning Center team along with Lydia Strickland. Uh, she also is a.
Do I have a second?
Of course not.
So, motion fails, lack of a second. Once again, council, this item is on the table here. I'll entertain a motion to approve the memorandum and understanding agreement between the City of Granbury and the Weatherford College for the use of their campus facility. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion, Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second, Councilman Corrigan. Council, any more discussion on this item? Councilman Corrigan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Neigh.
Councilman Wadley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Reiner?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. That is approved. Next, we'll move down to our number three item on the deliberation agenda, is to discuss and consider partnering with the Granbury Independent School District for a Texas Parks and Wildlife Trails Grant for property located near the Acton Middle School. And I'm going to call upon our city manager, Chris Kaufman, to get this one started. Chris, if you would, please.
Thank you. We've been working with Acton Middle School for a little over a year, discussing a trail around the perimeter of their campus, and at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Dawson, our principal at Acton Middle School, to lead us through a presentation that they've put together by their students. And we've got some opportunities to partner with them, and this is a great project, and I hope that you see the merit of it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Mayor Hewitt, city manager Chris Kaufman, council members, thank y'all for the opportunity to come and present this exciting project that we have going on. We had the opportunity to share with our school board last night, a little bit about this trails grant, and I don't, Carl, I don't see... I'm missing a clicker somewhere?
It's right there.
Got it.
So, we had the opportunity to go through this last night, and we also had the opportunity, and I just want to say a big kudos to J.C. Campbell, and very deserving of his award. And so, he was there last night, getting recognized, his family as well, for his wife's hard work in the school district as well. So, it's great to see J.C. here tonight, again, getting recognized, well deserved. And so, this exciting project, I have several people here with me tonight, including a couple of students. Walt Hartman, from AMS, one of our gifted and talented students, and Outdoor Learning Center, he's on the Outdoor Learning Center team, along with Lydia Strickland. She also is a GT student and OLC team member. Also, our eighth grade science teachers and Outdoor Learning Center coordinators, Mr. Scott Carpenter and Mr. Jeremy Scott are here also. They've helped to work with our students to put this proposal together. They're working in line also with our Outdoor Learning Center team, which we have a team of students from Acton Middle School that work together, create lessons. Each year, we serve about 2,200 elementary students who come over from field trips, have great lessons beyond the walls of the classroom, outdoor, in the Outdoor Learning Center. And then also, partnering with YMCA, and Lisa Gossard and Holly Martin are here with us tonight, and you'll hear a little bit from them as well. But if you would, look at the screen, and you can see actually, the layout of Acton Middle School, and from Google Earth. And what that basically is, is the campus, and the bright red is about a half a mile of trails that we have developed over the last eight years or so. We have about $25,000 in grant funding from Granbury Education Foundation, also with Wolf Hollow Power Plant, and some other just individual grants that we've received. And so, having four different classrooms out there with an archery range, and it really allows our students to get outdoors, and away, just away from the classroom, on multiple, multiple levels. We've always wanted to expand it as much as we can. This was all built, every bit of it was built, with volunteer work and just grant money. And so, we've always had that vision. And then, here comes the YMCA, and it's been a great partnership with YMCA and the school district, with what they have, what they've been able to bring to the table, not only for us, but our students, our families, our community. And so, now we're looking at this blue line that's around the outskirts of the campus. And what that basically is, we're looking at is like, is a trail, I guess, a running track, or a trail, similar to what we have here in Granbury. Couple of years ago, Chris Kaufman was on the leadership Granbury, and came through to see the Outdoor Learning Center. We got to share with him and others, and he mentioned to Mr. Carpenter, hey, why don't y'all consider this Texas Parks and Wildlife Grant? This is great funding. And so, for a couple of years, we've just really been brainstorming some different ideas. But our ultimate vision, I mean, ultimately, it'd be fantastic to be able to tie in a trail from Acton Middle School, all the way through town, to tie into downtown with what we already have existing. That would be fantastic. But I'm going to let a couple of my students present first, and let them share some ideas. So, Walt and Lydia are going to come up here and share some things with you guys, from what they kind of worked through, from their ideas and from their perspective as students.
All right. I'm going to be talking about the benefits of this trail for GISD. So, the first benefit we have here is continuing a sense of community by GISD. So, basically, what this is saying is, this trail wouldn't be an idea for only the school district, but it'd be open to the community, and we wouldn't, you know, only focus on the schools. The second benefit would be, city trails from downtown give safe access to students at GMS, but this trail could allow, and combined with future development, for AMS students to have similar opportunities. So, some people know that there's a trail, a walking trail, any running, that goes in front of GMS on that side of town, kind of by that airport over there. So, this trail could allow people living on this side of town not to have to travel over there, to that trail over there, or have to walk or run in their neighborhood. If they wanted to, you know, get out and have more time outside, they could come to this trail with their kids, or whatever, on this trail, as a different opportunity. The next benefit would be to expand outdoor education possibilities for GISD. And as Mr. Dawson had mentioned, we have the OLC already, which we teach younger children, and sometimes our classes may go out there for a lesson, but this could also expand opportunities for other schools in our district, such as GMS, the high school, or the elementary schools, and of course, AMS. Another benefit would be, the AMS cross-country team has a safe place to train. So, their places, you know, they could train would be the track, which, one, that, you know, cross-country doesn't only run on that track, you know, they run on trails throughout places. Their other only option would basically be the road, and as some people know, that James Road over in front of AMS is kind of a tight windy road over there, and it could get kind of tight with traffic, so that wouldn't be much of a great place to train with the cross-country. So, we think that trail would be a better opportunity for runners to go on, train for cross-country, you know, it'd be very similar to the tracks that they run on at Meets. And then, the last one would be a possibility of fund runs to raise money for GISD programs. We've had fund runs in the past on the OLC trails that we've already had, you've seen on the map that we have. And before that, we've said that the runners' experience on the mulch, the trail in the OLC is mulch, and it's kind of, there's windy paths in the OLC, it's not really much of a fun-run place. So, we think that this new trail would be a better place for the fun runs to happen. And these could happen for the AMS, GMS, and like I said, the elementary schools and high schools.
Okay. So, benefits for the city and community. This would be a community recreation area for people living on the Fort Worth side of town. It is a great outdoor space for families and ADA accessibility. It is an opportunity to have an outdoor workout space for Granbury, mainly, there's only indoor workout facilities. It could be a larger part of the Granbury Masters Trail Plan, and it would also extend the footprint of the YMCA for the community.
Thank you for having us this evening. One of the wonderful things, as Mr. Dawson stated, has been the partnership that has grown with AMS and the YMCA. It is something that has grown organically, to include the children and families from AMS, which we treasure, and we hope that this would allow us to benefit on both sides of the street. It would give us the ability to enhance the small group wellness opportunities for families, seniors, individuals, and youth.
The trail will tie into the crosswalk, which will allow for safer travel to the YMCA, and from the YMCA.
It allows an outdoor track as an alternative to the road. As the student said, running on James Road can be a little tricky, or the indoor track in our facility.
This will also allow our YMCA members to enjoy the nice weather, especially like on a day like today, and be able to workout at the same time.
And then, as the student said, it would allow us to extend our footprint and the opportunities for those of us who have members at the YMCA. Just for the council's knowledge, our membership base is roughly 10,000 people. So, it's a large group of people that we have the opportunity to serve through our YMCA.
So, last night, we were able to present the benefits of GISD, and so, I'm just going to turn it over to city manager Chris Kaufman, since he's been working directly with us, and Dr. Glenn met with us, with Randy Leach, and our team here, and so, Chris, I'll just let you share a little bit more, if you want to.
You bet. This began, like I said, quite some time ago, and we were talking about creating this new trail system, can you hear me? And anyway, through various meetings, they developed this slideshow, and this pictures of what it could look like. I introduced them to our grant writer, Jake McAdams. I invited Jake here, but I think his schedule would not allow him to be here. Oh, there he is, he made it after all. Come on up, Jake, I'm going to ask you a question here in a second. But the bottom line is, is we were sitting around talking at our last meeting, and the question came up is, you know, number one, the city's interested in extending our trail system throughout the city already, that's just a known fact of park life. And the Saratoga subdivision has a trail that's going to be going in there. And anyway, so there's going to be that neighborhood with about 400 to 500 homes with a walking trail, and ultimately, we need it to tie into the school system, so they can walk to school. And so, this is kind of a friendship deal, where we're working alongside by side with the school, to figure out how to meet the needs of our community. And anyway, we got to talking, and I realized, it kind of clicked, because we were talking about, you know, probably the city would need to contribute some financial support, the YMCA probably need to raise some money, the school would need to kick in some money. And I got thinking, well, it's a grant, we could use, if the city would host this application, and the school would give the land to the city on a grant application, then the match for that would already be met, and the rest of the grant could be used for construction and administration and engineering as well. So, we don't know what the price tag is on this, but we're asking for the council and the school board to let us move forward and put together the grant application. Let's see what it costs to do this, let's see how we can raise the money. The application's not due till February, is that correct? And is it a $200,000 grant award?
So, back in the fall, I did speak with the school about this project possibility. There were a few reasons that it kind of got pushed until the springtime. Back in the fall, one of the possibilities that we considered is actually applying for two grants, based upon stuff going on at Parks and Wildlife, they may actually hit relatively simultaneously. And so, one grant we could apply for would be the Trails Grant, and so, that is a total project grant of about $250,000. The grant portion of that would be $200,000, especially for the fitness equipment and some other components, the smaller trails area. We may also consider looking at a small communities park grant, which it's possible that they are going to revise the deadlines, and that may be due at the end of this calendar year. With that grant, we could look at the fitness equipment, as well as the balance of the pavement cost, the trails cost in that. That is a 50-50 matching grant. Looking at some rough numbers back in the fall, especially if the property is donated to the city as part of that match, I think that's going to substantially help out on whatever the match dollar amount is. So, depending on how it all shakes out, this could be an extremely beneficial project for both the city, as well as the school and the ISD as a whole. And so, we theoretically apply for, you know, what is that, about $275,000 a grant? Or we could apply for 200? There's a few different ways that we could mix it up, depending on how the city, the school, the ISD wants to go on this.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And so, you know, we're not talking about applying for a grant quickly, we're talking about putting it together, and then bringing it back to the school board and the city, and seeing what we come up with in the next few months. I think it's a great idea, staff recommends giving us the latitude to move forward.
All right, thank you very much. Council, you got any questions for any of these folks, the school, Jake, or Chris?
Mayor, I want to say...
Councilman Allen.
I want to say thank the young people for getting involved. That's really great, y'all did a great job, both of you. I know I sound like a grumpy old man up here, but I really love children, I got a grandson.
Council, any more discussion? All heckle that, I don't know what Mr. Dawson's doing out there, but he's turning out actors, engineers, speakers, future city leaders, athletes, you got a great program out there, and we hear it all over town. Trouble is, they don't want to leave that school, they want to stay right there. Council, you have any more discussion on this item? If there's no further discussion, I will entertain a motion to consider partnering with the Granbury Independent School District for a Texas Parks and Wildlife Grant for property located near the Acton Middle School.
So moved.
And I have that motion, Councilman Mobley and Councilman Wadley. Council, any more discussion on this item? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved, and look forward to seeing the process. Our next item is a joint deliberation with the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is not a joint meeting, we've asked the Planning and Zoning Commission to join with us, so that if there's any questions on this item, or concerns, that we make sure that they get answered at this meeting. But it's actually a joint, it's a Planning and Zoning Commission to discuss the advantages and disadvantages of rewriting the city development code to include the subdivision ordinance and zoning ordinance, in order to allow for Planning and Zoning Commission to have final approvals on all Platts submitted to the City of Granbury, and revisit Article IV, permitted uses of the City of Granbury zoning ordinance, considering the requirements of the SUP for each of the itemized uses tabulated. A quorum of the Planning and Zoning Commission will be present tonight, they are present tonight. So, with that said, I'm going to kick this off with Chris Kaufman to give us a staff report on this.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Planning and Zoning Commission, appreciate y'all coming to this special meeting tonight, and enduring our length, because I had no idea we were going to still be having you up here at this time.
It's been a great presentation.
A lot of good stuff going on. What our council has asked us to look at is internally, figure out a way to be developer-friendly. And right now, as you're aware, we currently have the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewing all Platts and subdivision projects, and making recommendations to the city council for final approval. The state law, when you create zoning, or planning and zoning commission, when you create that, it establishes, and empowers the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve those Platts. However, if the city council wanted to pass an ordinance, which we did in Granbury at some point in time, to where the Planning and Zoning would make recommendations, and the council would have the final say, that's what we did. And so, we're asking the P and Z to take this back to their committee meeting, and look through that law, have the city attorney help you, have our staff help you with any discussion and questions. But ultimately, there's about a delay of permitting that goes on, because of our duplication of services that you guys are adequately capable of taking care of. This council has confidence in you, and has seen your judgment in the past, and appreciate you. And at the same time, they're looking at our town is growing, and we have a transition going on here, where their agendas are getting longer and longer and longer, because of the growth that's occurring. And some of the things are just ministerial in function, like the housing project that was on the last agenda, they met every requirement in our code, and if we would have not approved it, then we would have, could have been taken to court and made to approve it. So, it's a ministerial function a lot of times. Where there's a zoning issue, we can't delegate that to the Planning and Zoning Commission, we still need your recommendation on zoning issues, or planned developments, that would still need to come to the council as well. But that's kind of a vision that's been articulated among the council in our strategic planning cycle, and then also, we wanted to revisit all the SUPs. If you look in our chart, it seems like every time somebody's trying to put in a business, they're having to issue an SUP. And I think what kind of got my attention was an upholstery shop. Whenever we went through a process to issue an SUP for a golf cart business in a strip center, we later found out that they would like to do upholstery work, and I told them that would take a complete separate SUP. And so, they'd already been through four months of tribulation, and so, they chose to keep that upholstery function at their other location in Fort Worth. So, anyway, that's all we're trying to do tonight, is let the council participate in this conversation with y'all, if you have questions, and kind of get a good feel for what we'd like for y'all to review. We're not telling you to go back and change things, whether you want to or not, we're asking for your input, and we're asking for your advice on whether this is the wisest thing for our community to do, and to revise those SUPs, where possibly, we could get rid of some of them, where they could be permitted uses instead of an SUP. I guess a good example is the, one of the recent ones on the square, a business came in needing an SUP, and they literally are spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, and they get permission to operate their business for three years out of the deal. So, you know, it needs to be a little more secure footing to be able to do your business, if you're going to invest a lot of money, that you don't have to turn around and come back and say, well, I did good, will you please let me go again, you know? And so, it needs to be considered a vesting interest, where if it's either permitted or it's not. And there are certain situations where an SUP should be required, we can all agree on that. But there's more than one way to deal with an egregious person in our community that's not taken care of. not taking care of business. You know, if, besides having an SUP and pulling their CIO, we can deal with those, the code enforcement and things like that. So, just something to think about. And I know Scott is here and is available to answer questions as well, but we'll turn it over for y'all to discuss amongst the council and the P and Z.
Thank you, Chris. He's exactly right. The council is wanting to see what it looks like on the planning and zoning's end of it or what they think might look like. And there's also been several cities we've identified that do it as such, so it might be something we want to discuss with those and see the things that they ran into. We even talked about, you know, what the cost would be for training and those kind of things. You know, we just want to have something that the council can look at or even if it's something that would fit Granberry, you might say. So, and like I said, we'll turn it over to, if there's any representatives or anybody wants to just speak. I think they've got, you've got mics down there, so if you guys want to ask the council for maybe some clarification or anything like that.
Thank you, counsel, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager. As Chris said, this topic came out of the Strategic Council Retreat back in February. And like Chris said, I recently spoke to that same tenant on the square. He volunteered some information to me and just basically said the process takes much longer here than other places. Some concern about the delay. Obviously, if you're not open, you're not generating a profit, so therefore going some profit opportunity. The city planning department did a survey of 18 cities, somewhat split relative to how to best navigate, you know, through this issue for the city council and the city. And I think as Chris said, you know, I've been, I guess I'm the shortest serving member on planning and zoning, but we really have a very qualified and engaged group of people. Great planning commission, great city planning. Rita does a fantastic job as our chair. And as you all know, P and Z commission was nominated and voted on by council, and we are a singular focus group. So, that's all we do. And for those of you who attend city council meetings, you see the broad array of topics that city council takes on every two weeks and the preparation that it takes to put those meetings together and come prepared. I guess the question I had, sort of rhetorical at this point, is, you know, how many instances have there been where council has overturned planning and P and Z on any of the SUPs or final plating? So, if we're just, you know, if there are some instances, you know, we should certainly look at that. But if we're checking the checker and we pass it through, and as Chris said, it's more ministerial than anything, we're kind of jamming it up, in my opinion. The other option would be to, you know, take a look at both, set up a monitoring program, perhaps for six months, come back and pull some items up and get feedback from council in terms of how they would have voted. And I do think in closing, it's an opportunity to streamline our process, continue the same good decision-making that we've had in an expedited fashion, saving time for the applicants, as Chris pointed out, as well as city council and city staff. So, thank you.
And also, if any council, if council members have any thoughts you want to throw in here, just go ahead and-
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Allen's got something?
I agree with Mr. Vale there that I hear it all the time, or used to, not as bad before Chris got here. It got worse before Chris got here, I should say. That it takes forever to get a permit, takes forever to do this, you've got to have this done. I agree with Mr. Vale. I think we ought to look at it on six months or nine months or a year. Chris, you probably got more saying that or know more about it than we do. The other thing is, question, and I think I'm, I hear and they didn't hear it right, but what happens if they, say they vote against a zoning or something in a permit, permit, I'm sorry, and those people come to us and say, "Hey, y'all put that on the agenda. I need to get this done." Can we override them at that time or is it over with whenever they vote?
We can't answer that, huh? We, and I don't think we can answer that one, but, you know, that's what we're going to do, though. We're going to try to identify those type of-
Problems.
Problem, right.
So, a zoning issue would always come before the council.
It comes before the council.
So, if it's a planned development or a zoning issue, by law, it has to come to the council. So, that's going to take a whole lot of what they're doing to us anyway. But where it doesn't require special zoning or an SUP, it should be ministerial and we're going on with that, so.
I think the question Rita was going to answer is, is there a field process for an applicant for an SUP?
Maybe that's what we all need to-
That's what we're asking.
Work with staff and the city attorney and work those things out because we don't have the answers tonight, I don't think.
And I think Scott has a, has a, some type of a agenda, you might say, for the, I guess it might be for the other, Scott, am I struggling? You might want to talk a little bit about that, but something that you've got to put together so that the P and Z can have it to work off of, you might say.
Sure. Scott's object development director for the city of Granberry. So, we'd be more than happy to piece together something that we can work with, with P and Z, if they want to go forward with this. So, one thing that we probably want to do is just look at model cities and get some feedback from them on making sure that the process is very clean and efficient and how the plat applications, if they are in fact approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, don't get ahead of any kind of zoning issue or site plan issue or PD, which has a development plan with detailed site plan elements. And that ties, has a good marriage between the plat and the zoning aspect of it. So, with a green light, that's our charge as city staff is to get some of those model ordinance, communicate with those cities that have really refined this and built the best mousetrap possible and present it back to P and Z. And if they embrace it, back to city council.
So, Scott, a lot of times on our agenda, we'll have the, for first thing, this is the first time I've heard that it was not PD's. So, but, which is fine because most of our new developments that come in are now under PD's. Rarely do we have a sizable development anymore that's not under a PD. But the PD comes, and sometimes the final PD and the plat came at the same time. So, I'm not really sure if the PD's still going to city council and we did a plat, where did that really save time for the developer?
So, it would be fairly efficient if the property's still in survey and we have a preliminary plat and a PD and they track the entitlement and the preliminary plat. You would approve the preliminary plat. If you have full approval, the PD, the entitlement side would go to the city council. They would still have to circle back around to the final plat and do their civil plans, but they would still have their entitlement in place, which is, to some degree, as we've seen with some recent projects tied to their financing, is their entitlement side. One of the problems that we see, at least from my vantage point, is when we see a pre-plated piece of property, a replat, where you need full civils and they don't have the land use entitlement and they're going through a replat process, that's where we need to research is how do cities best manage this in order to efficiently handle these types of products where we have a replat application. There may not be a variance associated with this. It's more ministerially oriented and you have a zoning case that's tied to that replat that has some level of discussion at the legislative level. Not getting the plat ahead of the game, what does that mean? Does that mean we conditionally deny it? Again, we need to see from other cities how they best manage it and get some feedback from them.
And that's exactly what we're asking is, you know, we just want to know the advantages and disadvantages the council was of what this looks like. That's, you know, that's the starting place for this. And it may take several months, but.
Good question. Just one other thing. I mean, I don't think anybody on P and Z, we may need to be a little bit more thorough in what we do to see if we're the final word. But I think my main question is really to council if they're ready to relinquish control on a controversial development. Because in the past, for the recent past, we've had some controversial ones that have been decided at council. So, my question would be, are you guys really ready to relinquish political control over some of that stuff?
That's why we're asking for it.
So, that's, that's, that's my, so I think it's really more of a council's decision if they're ready to let that go.
Don't have it.
I just want to make a comment. I mean, if you're going to relinquish the control, I mean, that would streamline the process. Right now, I think there's a three approval process, and I'll tell you why I say three approval. First, they got to go through the city. Once the city, once they meet all the city requirements, the city staff will say, "Yeah, you're good. We make the recommendation." Or they make the recommendations to the planning and zoning. Then they come to planning and zoning, we get the, we get the approval. And then our approval has to go up to city council, and then city council gives another approval. I mean, that's a three-part process where you could just have a two-part process where it just comes to us and it stops there. What could be a negative effect is that if our decision is not final, then you're going to have to deal with the consequences of people coming back and saying, "Hey, I disagree with planning and zoning. Now, let's put that on your agenda." So, you're still facing the issue. So, you could either give us the control and the authority to make the final decision or you can just deal with the issue. And if it's not approved to their liking, then you're just going to have to deal with the deliberations of what their, what the decision was made at planning and zoning.
And these are, I hate to keep bringing us back in here because we're getting up to where we're actually discussing the advantages and disadvantages right now tonight, and that's really not what the intent is. And that's exactly what we expect to hear or to see, you know, when you guys, after you talk about it and just, and bring it back to the council for consideration, we want to know the advantages and disadvantages. So, I don't think we're going to get all that out. I mean, you actually touched on a few of them, but tonight, we just want to, you know, have the council to, yeah, you know, we'll go back and look at this and see what the advantages and disadvantages of doing it this way. Go ahead.
You had made mention about if the P and Z wished to move forward. Is that a formal motion that has to be made?
No, no, no. That's not a meeting.
Okay. As a general contractor with 30 years, I see a lot of redundancy that we do with council. And I would, I would make a, I'd be all for moving forward with reducing another step of paperwork supplemental and voting.
Okay, very good. So, if there's no more discussion, then we'll look forward to hearing some, you know, from the council on what their, maybe their recommendations are or whatever.
So, we'll plan to schedule some work sessions with the P and Z and hopefully look at all the nuances of other cities and bring that forward to P and Z, get the pros and cons and have a report back to council and maybe have another joint meeting at a later date.
And thank you, Scott, and thank you guys for what you do for us. Thank you very much. Yeah, you can say that. You can be dismissed.
Thank y'all so much.
Our next item on the agenda is to consider approving the request from the Granberry Parks Board to proceed with a landscape project at Lambert Branch Park. A quorum of the Granberry Parks Board may be present, and I'm going to call upon Chris Kaufman to give us a staff report on that one, please.
Thank you. At this time, I'll turn it over to our Parks Director, Aaron McLean, and I believe he's got some recommendations from the Parks Board. Miss Kate did not see her coming. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Mayor, council, Mr. Manager. I'll give a little bit of back history to some of the newer council members on Lambert Branch Park. Some people don't even know where it's at. It's just north of us here. There's been lots of talk about our trail system, continuing that trail system with the school, and our current trail system goes right by this park. So, back in 2015, there was, there were some old structures removed from this property, so it created a void. And at that time, the current council, or the council at the time, excuse me, asked for the Parks Board to come to them with any recommendations they may have in the future to alter that master plan that was, that was changed that evening. So, well, the board has worked for some time on different ideas, trying to see what our community needs, how to add to that area of town. So, there's always been the thought of landscaping, kind of leaving that area a more natural area. It is surrounded on two sides by water. It runs right by the hike and bike trail. The newest bridge on the trail system spans the creek at that park. We have Neely House that's available for rental for functions. There's a new addition of the floating dock for boats there. So, it took some time to come up with some plans that include sidewalks, kind of winding sidewalks incorporated with landscaping and some play structures. But they did, they were very specific wanting to keep this area somewhat naturalized, to blend it with the surroundings. So, I believe we've got some slides here. So, this is a plan of showing the sidewalks and play areas. So, the rounder areas with the solid black lines are areas that we would hope to have some, some play structures, some land, and then the other areas would be landscaping. And of course, the wider area is a six-foot wide concrete sidewalk. This is just a rendition of some landscaping, so you can go back and see, it's the same site filled in with landscaping and trees. And we would want to use some native and naturalized trees and landscaping. And in a moment, Chairperson Jeanne Kate's going to talk a little bit about the financial aspect of it, and she may mention the, our local gardening club as well. So, I mentioned they were very specific on keeping it native or naturalized and to blend with the surroundings. These are examples of play features. Most of these are made, some of them are made from resin material or a combination of fiberglass and concrete. So, they really don't want traditional swings and traditional slides, but these are some examples of things, new play structures. And of course, there are some areas with slides, but these are, it's called tree line, and it kind of blends with the area, made to look like logs or rocks. And you can go back and see there are like turtles, frogs, and things of that sort. So, in the landscape areas, that's the idea, is have large, the fake boulders for kids to climb on, and then the large animals, and then also some of the play features. We did not have any pricing available on the play features. If we're going to reach out to other groups and organizations, as Jeanne will go into more detail on, we would like to give them the opportunities to, if they're going to partner with the city perhaps, to have them involved in the selection of this. We do have some pricing on the sidewalks. That's about 6,000 square foot of sidewalk. That's, and the landscaping runs around $45,000. We would do the landscaping ourselves in-house. We could do the irrigation as well. We would plan to do bubblers to the trees and then drip irrigation to all the beds. We wouldn't have any overhead irrigation. So, at this point, I'd like to have Jeanne come up, and then I'll be glad to answer any questions also when she's finished.
Thank you, Aaron. And you know, of course, I keep telling you, you've got a jewel in him. At the February 11th meeting of the Park Board, we had decided that parks are so important and they're vital to not only the people who live here, but our visitors to come here. And I think that our parks have become a jewel in the crown of Granberry. Lambert Branch Park is absolutely precious. It's a very natural setting with, as Aaron said, the water on two sides. The city is always being requested for money. This time, we would like the council's permission to start a group to fundraise through the civic organizations. We have spoken to the Optimists, the Beautification Council, the Kiwanis, and Rotary, and they would like to meet jointly and see which parts of the project that they would like to undertake and see how much money we can raise going through that way. But we do- But we do note we have to have the city's permission in order to do any fundraising, and that's what we're requesting for this evening.
Thank you, Jean. Counsel, do you have any questions for Aaron, Jean, or the city manager? Here are none. I'll entertain a motion to, to approve the request from the Granbury Parks Board to proceed with a landscape project at the Lambert Branch Park.
So moved.
I have that motion, but Councilman Allen?
Second.
And a second, but Councilperson Reiner? Counsel, any more discussion on that item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We love our parks. Our next item is to consider all matters incident and related to the assurance and the sale of the City of Granbury, Texas Combination Tax and Revenue Certificate of Obligation, Series 2019, including the adoption of Ordinance Number 1931 authorizing the assurance of such certificates of obligation. And I'm going to turn this, once again, over to Chris Kaufman, our city manager.
Thank you. As your memo might remind you, back in April, we passed a resolution to, with the intent to issue these certificates of obligation for the purpose of buying these two firefighting pieces of equipment. One is a pumper truck and the other is a ladder truck. We went through the process to find the best sort of financing, and at this time, I will turn it over to our Finance Director, Ava Gregory, and our Financial Advisor, Julie Durker. Y'all come on up and tell us all about it. I think we've got some great interest rates to share with you, counsel.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I wanted to basically, as Chris introduced the item, this is the final step in the approval process to issue the financing for the two fire trucks the council approved during our budget process. At our last meeting on April 2nd, or the previous meeting on April 2nd, council approved a resolution with their intent to issue these bonds to finance the two fire trucks. The, at that point, it was determined that that total amount to be financed would be $2,210,000, and that the financing, the terms would not be more than 10 years. In the meantime, we have worked together with Hilltop Securities, our financial advisors, and worked on issue, securing a financing for the fire trucks, and we are happy to present that we were able to secure very low interest rates since our financial advisor from Hilltop is here. I'm going to let him also update you on the terms, and this is Joy Durker with Hilltop Securities, but I'll be here if you have any questions.
Good evening. This is a simpler transaction than what we typically undertake here, but it is a certificate of obligation issue. We issue one of those about once a year. So as Ava mentioned, it's in the amount of $2,210,000. These COs are being placed directly with Amagi Bank at a rate of 2.38%. Final maturity is August 15, 2029, so it's 10 years. These COs may be repaid from fund balance or from ad valorem taxes, I believe it's a budget amount from fund balance. These COs are callable anytime, so if you'd like to pay them off early, you are welcome to, although I don't see you getting under 2.38%. And finally, closing is scheduled for June 18th, so have money in the bank that day. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Councilman Allen, how's your heart?
My heart?
Well, you heard that number, 2.38.
I like to answer it right. I was thinking, oh, we were going to take some funds out of some department that wasn't using all of it to help us on this.
We, we did set aside the first-year payments with General Fund Revenue.
We sure did. And when will our first payment be due?
About six months after the...
Well, I'm reading August 20th.
Oh, that's about six months after the resolution.
First payment will be February 15, 2020. First interest made.
We've got over a year.
February, yeah.
Good job.
Counsel, any more discussion on this item? Thank you. So if more, and no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion to, to approve the City of Granbury, Texas Combination Tax and Revenue Certificate of Obligation, including the adoption of the Ordinance Number 1931 authorizing assurance of such certificate of obligation.
So moved.
And I have that motion, Councilman Wadley?
Second.
And a second, but Councilman Corrigan? Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is to consider adopting Resolution Number 1915 regarding the petition of Red Cedar LLC to have their property included in the city's three-year municipal annexation plan. And I'm going to call upon Chris to give us a, a report on that and sort of kind of tell us how we got to where we're at here on this.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I will defer to the city attorney.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I think he saw that coming.
Mayor, Council, for your consideration is the petition of Red Cedar LLC. Red Cedar LLC is the owner of certain properties in the proposed annexation, Section Number Four. They have filed a petition pursuant to Section 43.052I of the Texas Local Government Code seeking to be accepted from the current proposed annexation and placed into a municipal annexation plan with the city. They also cite in their petition that they, the reason for this request is because they believe that no reason exists under generally accepted municipal principles and practices for separately annexing these areas. I will tell you that you have two options, you can accept the petition and we can create a, a new municipal annexation plan and place them in that and consider annexation in three years. Or you can deny the petition and the, the annexation will move forward as is. In addressing their two issues, the first being the generally accepted annexation plans and principles, first of all, it's been stated in both public hearings that the, and, and restated that the reason for this annexation specifically does fall within those principles and practices. The reason that this is, this is, proposed annexation is occurring is the management of adjacent land uses, corridors and gateways for the ingress and egress to the city, required planning and growth, the city's ability to provide public health and welfare services to the community. It addresses the city's needs to gain highway frontage and helps in, in relieving anticipated transportation issues. And all of this has been heard by all of you before, it's been adopted, it was, it was codified in the City Council's 2016 Comprehensive Plan for Growth. So the allegation that they made that it doesn't follow the municipal practices, in my legal opinion and in my research of the case law, is just incorrect. It, it most certainly does. Secondly, they request to be placed in the annexation plan under Resolution 99020, which was passed by a previous council. The annexation plan specifically states that the city council plans only to annex areas exempted by Section 43 of the Local Government Code pursuant to 43.052H, and that is precisely what this annexation does. It annexes pursuant to 43.052H1. So with that, I leave it to you to consider and decide to either accept the, the proposed petition and place them in a municipal annexation plan, or deny it, and, and we move forward.
So counsel, you've heard what the, the attorney has, has pointed out there, that this is merely a, a request from Cedar LLC to have their property and, and to, to request for the petition that the attorney has talked about. And he's told you, he's pointed out, and I think it's in your tablets there, pointed out the different versions of what we could do.
May I repeat possibly speak on the item?
Pardon?
May I repeat possibly speak on the item?
It's, it's not a public hearing.
No, it's not, it's not a public hearing. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you there, but no, this is, this is not a public hearing, we're not, and, and counsel, we want to be careful, we're not discussing the annexation, we're discussing the request for the, the request for the petition at this point. No, sir, it's not a, a public hearing, I'm sorry. So counsel, do you have any questions or comments for the, or questions to the attorney on this? If none, I'll entertain a motion to, to, to consider or not to consider this, adopting this Resolution Number 1915. Do I have either motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
I make a motion that we reject the petition.
So I have a motion to deny the petition. Do I have a second?
Second.
That was from, I got a second from Councilman Corrigan. So we have a motion and a second to deny the said petition presented from Red Cedar LLC. Any more discussion on this, counsel?
What?
We will take a record vote, I'm sorry.
My question is, Mayor, you know...
You've about lost it there, go ahead.
We, we looked at that property a couple, three years ago, where they built the big building up on up y'all. And did, did I misunderstand what he said, he's, that they would let us annex them in three years for no problem? Is that right or wrong?
That's, that's not what that actually says, I mean...
I've never heard that, I didn't say that.
Well, it says right here, request the city, attendant arbitration within our agreement to both the city's...
No, that's not what that says.
Now, three years annex plan, place newly.
And, and we've already wrote that out, right?
Yeah.
So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion, counsel? We'll take a record vote on this. Councilman Corrigan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilman Wadley, how do you vote?
Nay.
Councilman Mobley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Reiner, how do you vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that request is denied. Our next one is to consider adopting Resolution Number 1916 regarding the request of Red Cedar LLC to enter into arbitration. Here again, counsel, this is not on the annexation, this is merely the LLC is requesting to enter into arbitration. And I'm going to call upon our attorney to kind of define what that, what that means to us.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Council. This is a, for your consideration, a resolution either agreeing to enter into arbitration or to deny the request for arbitration. This is a procedural issue in nature. 43.052I of the Texas Local Government Code states that i-if no action is taken that, on the petition that we discussed in, in Agenda Item Number Seven, that the petitioner may, it is permissive, not mandatory, may request the city to enter into arbitration. In my opinion, the request for arbitration was made prematurely, the city had not even been given an opportunity to, to take action or not take action when the request was filed. Nonetheless, if, if the request for arbitration was sent to the city in writing, so we placed it on the agenda for you to consider, although we have taken action, you have taken action and you denied the petition to be placed in the municipal annexation plan, you may still consider the request for arbitration. Accepting the request for arbitration will mean that we'll need to establish ti-time line to arbitrate, as well as appoint an arbitrator. Effectively, that will stay the proposed annexation as to the, the Red Cedar particular property. Again, it is not mandatory that we enter into arbitration. If we don't, we continue forward with the annexation as is. Subsequent to that, if, if Red Cedar seeks any other remedies, they would have to do such through something called a quo warranto, and, and they are aware of that. I've been advised by the county attorney and district attorney that they have received requests for that from Red Cedar, and effectively what that is, is it means that Red Cedar does not have standing to bring a lawsuit against the city as to the annexation, except through the quo warranto process whereby they would have to convince the, either the Attorney General's Office, the District Attorney, or the County Attorney to bring suit on behalf of the state to challenge any alleged irregularities as to our annexation. So that would be the next process, if they could convince one of those, one of those offices of the state to file a lawsuit. Otherwise, my recommendation to you is that there is no need for arbitration, as one, it was premature, two, we have taken action on the petition, but it is for your consideration.
Thank you, Jeremy. Let me, so if the petition would have been, if the petition would have been approved, there would have been no item number eight, is that what you're telling me here?
That, that is correct.
There would be no need for an item eight. So, and I'm hearing that they placed both of these on the agenda tonight, I guess thinking it wouldn't get approved, or it, or what it was, I, I don't understand why they would do that, but probably maybe it would have taken a little more time, but that clears that up. But we are looking at this, counsel, we, we do have the, and they are, they, they can do requests for arbitration, there's, it's not mandatory, but they can go forward to that, and they have put it on the agenda item, so you've heard from the coun, you've heard from our attorney what that means to us, is there any questions to the attorney on this particular item?
I've got one.
Or Chris, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Allen?
Jeremy?
Yes.
Okay, let's say that they don't get the votes to do arbitration.
Right.
And they hire some more attorneys and they sue the city. What's that going to cost us, roughly?
Well, first of all, they don't have standing to sue the city, the case law is, is crystal clear on that. They would have to go to the District Attorney, the Attorney General, or the County Attorney, and they would have to file a quo warranto lawsuit against the city, and that's if, after they evaluate the case, they believe that there are any procedural irregularities as to the annexation. We have complied with every timeline, we, we have complied with all of our postings, we have had all of our required meetings, everything set out in Section 43 that is required for us to comply with, we have. What would it cost to litigate? I, I don't know the answer to that. If the lawsuit's over in three days, it might cost a couple of grand, if it goes for 10 years, it might cost a hundred grand, I, I don't know, it's, it's...
Well, if, if you're so sure we're going to win, what's it going to hurt to give them arbitration? Why are they going to win?
Well, if, if we're going to waste money to go to arbitration and time, efforts, and energies?
I guarantee you, that's not a fly-by-the-night company, and they got money to hire attorneys, I promise you.
Right, I, I understand, and, and my issue is not with the company, or an individual, or whomever it is. My, my job is to give you the, the legal analysis of this situation, which is, one, the arbitration was requested prematurely, because normally that's required when, when the city does not take an action. However, we have taken action as to, as to the request for the petition, but since they filed it, we, we put it on the agenda as well for you to consider, but it, it is not mandatory, it's not compulsory, we, we do not in any way need to agree, and, and the, that would just be to go to arbitration to discuss the issue they put in their petition, which we, we've already discussed, and, and we understand and believe that we have done everything that we need to do under the Local Government Code.
Okay, so if, if, if we vote no, and then on the 1st of June, we come to our meeting, and we vote to annex them, because they're part of it, right?
That, correct.
Then can they file a lawsuit against us to stop us or anything, or not?
They would have to file it through the quo warranto with the AG, the Attorney General, the District Attorney, or the County Attorney would have to look at the case, evaluate it, and agree to file a, a suit for them.
Counsel, any more clarification through the attorney here, or any questions? Councilman Corrigan?
Who would, if we decided to go to arbitration, who would bear the cost of the arbitration?
Initially, they would bear the cost of the arbitration, but if they were successful in the arbitration, then we would bear it.
If we win, and they pay our, our attorney fees, is that right?
Yeah, initially, they, they bear the cost of arbitration, that's set out in Chapter 43 as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
So Jeremy, you're, you're saying as far as procedurally, we're okay, there's no irregular, irregularities in the annexation process that you can see?
Correct.
Okay, our duty as a council is to... Okay, our duty as a council is to look at the citizens of Granbury that live in the City of Granbury and protect their interests. From your standpoint, we're not exposed on this, is that correct?
I don't believe we are, no.
Is there any advantage for the City of Granbury to agree to arbitration at this point?
No advantage that I see.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, I'd like to make a motion to suspend, to suspend this motion and to suspend the rules and to go into executive session. I'd like to make that in the form of a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I got a second by Councilman Wadley. All in favor of going to executive session, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The council, at this time, will go into executive session pursuant to 551071, consultation with our attorney. At this time, we're going to executive session. Reconvening into open session, there was no action taken in executive session. We were now reconvening into open session. We now move into item number eight on the agenda, which was tabled for a time. So we have a motion to take this, to take motion item number eight back on the table. Entertain a motion, put that back on the table. I have that motion by Councilman Reiner.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Item number eight is to consider adopting Resolution Number 1916 regarding the request of Red Cedar LLC to enter into arbitration. Counsel, we've had some discussion on this. Are there any other questions for our attorney or our city manager at this time? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to either consider or to not consider the Resolution Number 1916, I'm sorry, to approve or not to approve Resolution Number 1916 regarding the request of Red Cedar LLC to enter into arbitration.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel.
I'd like to make a motion to not approve or the Resolution 1916.
So I have a motion on the floor to not approve Resolution Number 1916 regarding the request of Red...
I'm sorry.
To deny the request for arbitration.
So I stand corrected. We have a motion to deny the request for arbitration, which is Resolution Number 1916.
Second.
And we have a second by Councilperson Wadley. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? Hearing none, Councilman Corrigan, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Wadley?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley?
Aye.
Councilman Reiner?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. That is approved. That is denied at this time. At this time, I, motion, at this time, I will now declare that the Granbury City Council is convening into open session, that all the members are present. The city council will now, once again, go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with authority contained in these following sections. Section 551071, consultation with our attorney, section 551072, deliberation regarding real property, and section 551087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We will go into executive session. Taking an executive session. Counsel, are there any more ayes or do you'd like to discuss? If no further discussion, the council meeting is adjourned.